Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Charlene, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Polika.
Here.
Piana.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here. Thank you. We have a quorum this evening. Our next item of business would be the approval of the agenda. It was council's pleasure on the agenda this evening.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request we add presentations for Ferndale Public Schools, and I'd like to request we make that presentation B between WFRN and the Downtown Development Authority.
Very good. So noted.
I support.
Any other additions or changes to the agenda this evening? Is there a motion?
Oh, sorry. I move to accept the agenda as with the changes noted.
Support.
Moved by Piana, supported by Polika. Any discussion? Charlene, could you call the roll?
Councilmembers Lennon.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on now to presentations, and our first presentation, a very special one for us here at council, because we get to recognize two people who you never get to see even though they're at every city council meeting, because they're back there running all the equipment, and they do an outstanding job, and they do it as volunteers. And so, if Charlene is listening, and Charles, we'd like to embarrass you for a moment. Oh, there they are. So come on out, come on out. Did they tell you we were doing this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all right. Wow, you look so nice this evening. Thank you. You're right. So as I've mentioned to the audience, you guys are here every meeting, although they never get a chance to see you, because you're back there working very hard on the, to make sure all the equipment works, and if you're watching at home, these are the folks that make that possible. We couldn't literally broadcast our meetings without both of you, and we are very indebted to your service. So let me embarrass you for a minute by reading this nice proclamation. Honoring Charlene and Charles, I believe they're both words the same, we'll just put your both in there. For your many years of service to WFRN-TV, the city's cable television station. I, Mayor David Coulter, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extend the city's appreciation to Charlene and Charles Fawn for their many years of service to WFRN-TV, our cable television station. They embody the ideal of volunteerism, always going above and beyond to provide assistance during the live broadcast of city council meetings. Their commitment to excellence has been a great benefit to the station and to the city. Oh, they are a little different. So Charlene, I have to look at you at this one. Charlene and her late husband John not only volunteered at the station themselves, but also instilled their belief in the importance of giving back to the community into their three children, Charles, Michael, and Arian, who have all volunteered at WFRN-TV throughout the years with unwavering dedication. Charlene's time and energy has been a valuable asset to Ferndale's television station. She is a credit to this community and this organization, and it is with our heartfelt appreciation that we celebrate your achievement. So let me...
I'll start with yours.
Thank you.
So here's the part that's different about yours. Cal has volunteered at the station along with his parents, John and Charlene, as well as his siblings, Michael and Arian. This strong sense of family and community are qualities not often seen anymore. WFRN-TV is very fortunate to have Cal, who embodies the very spirit of volunteerism. The rest is the same, but our appreciation is just as strong. Thank you very, very much.
Do you need to say something on the other side of my phone? No?
No comment.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. It was very welcome. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right.
The new presentation, Item B, is the update on the public schools, and I believe our Board of Trustees member Amy Butters is here to do that.
Good evening. I'm Amy Butters. I'm a member of the Ferndale School Board. I've got lots of visual aids here for you, so I might have to bear with me. I would just like to update you on a few of the great things that are happening in the Ferndale schools. Up on the screen, we've got some pictures from some recent events. The one that's up there right now is from our extravaganza, which was, well, okay, I'm not going to be able to talk as fast as the pictures are going. So the extravaganza was an annual event that we had at the Ferndale High School gym, and it featured performances of the choirs, the bands, and the orchestras from grades four and up, plus there were singers from Roosevelt Primary, and also the Ferndale Independent Percussion, which is formerly known as the Winter Line, though it's kind of the winter marching band component of our music program. And they all performed, and also there was a display of student art from throughout the district, and science projects from Ferndale Middle School. And it was a really fantastic day. It was, it had to be rescheduled because of the snow, and so we were a little worried, but it was still a great turnout, and it was a really great day. Also up on the screen, this is our student from Ferndale High School, Nathaniel Brison Fast, who signed a national letter of intent, it's been a few weeks ago now, to play football with Central Michigan in the fall. And he's plans on studying the fields of athletic training or teaching while he's at Central Michigan, and so we're very proud of Nate. And then also up on the screen are pictures from our ceremony that we had at the Digital Learning Center. We had, because of the nature of that program, it's an independent, more of an independent study program, and so there are kids that are graduating, you know, in the middle of the year. And so we had a commencement ceremony for 34 kids who received their high school diplomas. That was on January 5th. There's the picture from that event. It was really, it's always a really great event to see those graduates. So that's a, that's a little bit of what's been going on in the past. One other past event that I want to be sure and highlight is our advocacy trip, which we had on February 19th. I know at least a few of you were there for the, for the picture and rally that we had at Ferndale High School to show support for our group that traveled to Lansing that day to advocate for better funding of our schools. And it was a fantastic day. My colleague on the board, Karen Toomey, and also Kevin Deegan Kraus, spent a lot of time organizing that trip, and it was a, it was a huge success. And we're very happy to say that we have these flags available for purchase.
Fund our schools.
These are for your car. Fund our schools, and these are available for purchase, so please get in touch with me if you'd like one of these. This is a way for us to spread the word about our advocacy. And this is not, this is not over. Our advocacy effort is continuing past the trip that we took. Specifically, there's a committee called the External Relations Committee, which is part of the school board, who is, they are working on all of these efforts. And I would like to invite everyone, if you are interested, to go to their meetings, which are on the first Monday of every month. The next one will be April 7th at 7:00 over at Harding. So we encourage you to join us in that effort.
Who is on that committee?
Karen Toomey and Kevin Deegan Kraus.
Oh, okay.
Are heading that up, and then we've got, are there any, is there anyone here that's on the committee? I know we've got lots of community members that are participating. We've got teachers, we've got some municipal leaders that are helping us out. So it's a nice range of people that are, that are joining that effort. Okay, so looking ahead now, I just want to talk about a couple of things. First, this is our poster for our Ferndale High School musical this year, Thoroughly Modern Millie. And that's coming, that's coming up, March 22nd is opening, the opening day for that, and you're going to start seeing lawn signs pop up for that show. I did stop over yesterday to pop, just peek a little bit at some of the set construction, and some of the costumes are going to be fabulous for this show, and I know the music is going to be great. All the kids are learning how to tap dance, and so I know, I know there's some fans. Where did I see? I know she's a big fan, right? Yes. So be sure and get your tickets. There's any number, they'll be available at the door, or you can check out the Ferndale Schools website, or there's any number of the kids that are involved with the show that you can purchase tickets from, too.
And it'll be performed in the newly remodeled auditorium.
Absolutely.
Which is beautiful if you haven't seen it.
This will be our first musical in our newly remodeled auditorium with the new lights and the new sound system and the new, you know, everything, the new curtain, everything will look really nice, and so that's, that's going to be very exciting. All right, last, my last plug. I am a member of the Ferndale School Board, but I am also a member of the Ferndale Education Foundation, and that is separate from the school district. It's a fundraising organization. And this Friday is our big fundraiser. It's a roaring twenties, putting on the ritz dinner and auction. And it's going to be a great evening. It's happening this Friday from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Club Venetian, and we're going to have some of the kids from Thoroughly Modern Millie are going to be there to perform. There's going to be some other, I think orchestra kids and some dancers, and we are going to have lots and lots of silent auction items. And the Ferndale business community has, you know, come through for us every year, and this is not an exception. They have really come through with lots and lots of great silent auction items. Plus, we'll have a live auction. Our auctioneer this year is Terry Paris, who many of you may remember from, he used to be the Ferndale Patch Reporter here in Ferndale, and so he's going to be our auctioneer. And of course, the big finale of the event is the raffle drawing, which is a $5,000 grand prize. So if anyone needs raffle tickets, I've got them here. They're $10 apiece. I'm pretty sure I have the winning one here. So be sure and let me know if you're, if you need to be, if you need to be set up with some auction, with some raffle tickets. Okay, I think that's it. Our next school board meeting is Monday, March 24th at 7:00.
Other questions of Amy?
I have one that's a little bit off the beaten path, Amy. Has there been any discussions about the Ferndale High baseball season?
Not that I'm aware of.
I did, well, I did hear that, you know, that along with much other schools, of course, it might be in jeopardy.
I have not heard of anything, yeah, I haven't heard of any, of any issues involving, but I'll definitely ask around and get back to you on that, because I imagine it is something that's on people's minds.
Yep. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Amy. All right, our next and final presentation is the Downtown Development Authority's 2013 Market Analysis Report. And Christina, you're going to present that tonight?
I should be right on there. I saw him put it on there.
Yeah, it's so hoarse. That didn't happen that often. All right, in, oops, 2013, the Ferndale DDA did conduct its market analysis. This has been a while since we've actually conducted a market analysis. Last time was in 2005 and 2006. We have done small updates along the way, but not a full overall market analysis. Tonight, I'll go over our business development goals, the market analysis overview, the recommendations from the market analysis, and really how we're going to apply these recommendations, which is more like the art and science of business development. And last but not least, how we can team together between the city and the DDA to accomplish these, these goals. Top goals for the Business Development Committee and for the organization itself are to strengthen the business mix in the downtown, encourage mixed-use development and density, including office and living space, which will help to strengthen our businesses, especially our daytime office, daytime traffic, increase parking availability, and promote the ease of the parking system. And those all tie back into improving businesses' bottom lines, as well as increasing the number of stores that patrons visit during a visit. The surveyed area extended beyond our tax increment financing boundaries. It went through our entire DDA boundaries. This was different from years past, so we really couldn't be comparing apples to apples when you're looking at previous market analysis. And if you compare our census data of the population in Ferndale compared to our trade area, that I'll show you a map on, in the next slide, the trade area is defined by the visitors who are surveyed and where they live. The median age there is 42.3, which compared to the city itself is 35.6. So you'll see that our age group is a little bit higher there, as well as the household income. And the trade area covers 23 zip codes. This is the trade area. And patrons surveyed, you'll see that 41% are between the ages of 25 and 54, whereas 34% are between the ages of 45 to 64. Also, in terms of ethnicity, the comparable between the trade area and those surveyed was interesting as well. African-American was actually down in terms of those who were surveyed compared to the trade area, so which, which shows you that we have an opportunity there to penetrate that market a little bit further.
So I'm sorry, if I'm reading that correctly, about 43% of the patrons downtown that were surveyed were African-American, am I reading that correct, currently? In our, no?
No, 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 no. Compared to the trade area, white is 64, and surveyed, and 43 in the trade area, whereas those surveyed, 21.3 is African-American that were surveyed, and 49.6 actually live in the trade area.
Gotcha.
Okay. So it shows that you have that gap, that you can actually try to go and market to African-American audience a little bit stronger there. Another clip of our trade area, breaking down our, our trade area based on dining, shopping, and working trade areas as well. And then in terms of trip purpose, one thing I wanted to point out is with the survey this year, we were really focusing in on that daytime traffic, so 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., trying to get a good feel for what people are currently doing, so we can really grow that daytime audience. So you'll see a significant amount went towards shopping and dining and entertainment. And when you compare it to our occupation as well, we found some really interesting facts in terms of creative professionals. 33.8% are creative professionals, well, while 29.2% are super creative professionals. So it shows you...
Can we find the difference?
Yeah.
What's the difference between super creative and creative?
Super creative. And those are based on psychographics, so it would be someone who would probably be more in the arts field more specifically, as opposed to a creative professional could be someone who works within maybe a marketing or advertising agency, but isn't necessarily a super creative person creating art themselves. Does that make sense? More of a professional.
Self-employed over...
Yes.
Self-employed?
And we can give you more of the information on the psychographics and how that breaks out, but I think it's nice to see that there is a significant group that are creative or creative plus that we can pull from. And I think in terms of our working class, that's really showing you that we have very, very much a creative base that is here, living, working, and in this trade area. So in terms of recommendations, and I'm going to quickly go through these, because I know we're crunched for a little bit of time here, is that we are going to be looking at launching a campaign for millennials, penetrating that audience a little bit further. I think Ferndale is known for being a youthful market, but it is interesting to show that those age demographics are pointing the fact that we're getting a little bit older, and we need to refocus and make sure that we're targeting the younger patrons as we grow. Also, attracting, attracting leakages that are going into the Detroit market or east and west markets, so making sure that we're creating some synergies along the way. So to look at that, for the city and the DDA to team together on, is really building upon that east-west connectivity with our communities that neighbor, neighbor us, and building the continuity along the strip, as well as adding live-work sections to our websites, which we currently both do not have, offer affordable housing options for our younger audience, attract businesses that appeal to the millennials, and make sure that our connection with Detroit and the Woodward Corridor really highlights our successes and how we create the, or support the creative uses along the corridor. We're also looking at creating a comprehensive cross-promotional program that would include retailers and restaurants. This would help to increase the number of visits a patron, a number of stops a patron has during a visit. We did see that go down compared to previous studies, so this is something we definitely want to focus on. So cross-promoting through our website and Facebook, offering text message signups to residents for downtown Ferndale, as well as downtown Ferndale businesses can offer rewards to city employees, and vice versa, city, the city could offer employees incentives for shopping and living in town. Office recommendations, some of the things that we looked at this year that was different with the study is that we did focus on what, what can we do with office. In previous studies, we did not look at this, but we felt this is very important for growing our business base. So what was recommended was 20,000 to 30,000 square feet of Class A office space, which is supportable, and looking at upper-story central business district development, as well as main floor C2 area development. And although the market might be a little bit soft, we are obviously seeing signs of growth in that and interest, especially in Ferndale, given our agenda later. And also looking at identifying buildings for conversions, working on public-private partnerships, attracting creative uses together, and incentivization. So our build program serves, serves as an incentive for the DDA, but also we can look at building codes and zoning flexibility, as well as potential parking discounts to, to help and assist office space. Retail and restaurant recommendations, 12,000 to 15,000 retail clothing and accessories, 10,000 to 13,000 square feet of restaurant and entertainment, and 9,000 to 12,000 of general merchandise and discount stores. So when we applied some of this information, and we're looking at the entire market of the DDA area, we do need to strengthen our existing businesses and their market position. Build more awareness of their existing, of their, of the existing businesses and what they really offer in their niches. What we are finding is that some of the restaurants that were, that were being recommended for the downtown were businesses that we have already offering those products. So it might be building awareness or building, building up quality in that respect. Also assisting businesses in expanding in the downtown or improving their product lines, so coinciding with that first one. Attracting a compatible national anchor to draw a large volume and support entrepreneurs in very key areas, and we have to be very sensitive towards this, looking at it geographically and financially. And as mentioned before, increasing our daytime uses, uses with office development, and marketing to current daytime tenants. Other things would include restaurant types, in terms of restaurants that could be brought into the entire DDA area, looking at our expanded district of the DDA, but also the types themselves. Make sure that they're high-quality and original, something that isn't already in the market, as well as using them as a catalyst for the district ends. General merchandise, although it might be supportable as, as a whole, we do want to focus that at our district ends, as well as within the central business district, look at growing our comparable retail shopping and competitive retail shopping. And last but not least, I think is, when you look at these growths and the potential for new development in the area, you always have to maintain and manage a marketable and leasable rate within our district. One, to remain competitive, but two, to, to keep our character of our downtown and the community that we really love. So with that, that was, I know.
Yeah.
It was best.
Excellent. Some questions of Christina? Well, I have a couple, I guess. There's some really good data in there, both demographic and strategic data. Is there plans to share that with the, with the downtown business owners? Some of that I could see could be immediately relevant, and some just so that they're aware of it, but you have a, is there a strategy to, to share that with them?
Yeah, we, we do have the summary sheet. That just helps to kind of synthesize that down, which was included in your packet. That will go out to businesses, as well as be available for businesses who are looking to come into the area, and out to developers, and also our property owners, so that they have a better understanding of what we're looking for within the downtown area. As for the businesses in terms of either product development or market niches and making sure that we're helping and assisting them to support their market penetration, it would be identifying some of those businesses and working with them independently on that, for sure. Are you done?
One, one other question. A question I get all the time is, well, it's more like a statement. You know what we really need? We need a place that sells this. Or why don't you guys get more places that do this, that, or the other thing? And I try to explain that while we can encourage certain things, you know, there, there's limitations, this is free enterprise, and a landlord can lease to who they like, but talk just a little bit, because I hear this a lot, about what kinds of things that the DDA can do, the city can do, through these kinds of studies or otherwise, to help, help encourage and incentivize or meet some of these goals, which, you know, really need to be done in partnership with, with the building owners and others.
Right. I mean, first and foremost, it does start off with the relationship building, making sure that your property owners are, one, aware of you, and that they have a better understanding of what you're looking for. It's educating them as well, because many of them, this isn't their expertise, they own a building, and they want to fill it. And a lot of times, they want to fill it fast, because they want the income. And it's working not only with them, but also the local brokers that might be supporting them in terms of leasing out space, so that they understand the value in waiting for one of the best tenants for that space. And, you know, your highest, your highest and best income use may, might not always be the highest and best use for the district. And a great example of that is actually where Modern Natural Baby and Painting with a Twist came in, and really working with that property owner and identifying that this was a very large building in our downtown, and that filling that size space would be very challenging and would probably bring in something that we did not want to see within the downtown area. So encourage, we really encourage them to break up that building and make it into smaller uses, which makes it more compatible for retail space. And that is, a lot of times, the biggest challenge. How can you get them to that point? Build funds help, but they aren't always the end-all, the be-all, especially when you're looking at that type of building square footage potentially. But also flexibility in our zoning laws, and, and looking for new ways to incentivize them. And although I might not have a great example right now, but I think that one thing that you can look at is your, your parking in your downtown area, if you were to, say, ever to implement some other form of central business district pay, payment in lieu of program, you might want to, say, incentivize for retail space compared to another type of use potentially. And also, I think that when you're looking at the overall site plans as, for your planning commissions, you know, they have to factor in, a lot of times, there would be parking, trees... trees, all those elements that really make the environment work well together. But I think that when you're looking at working with a property owner, you start with the basis of the information, build that relationship, and hopefully over time, you make them make some small adjustments and changes. Ultimately, you have a zoning ordinance in place. You are allowed, as a business, if you are zoned for it, you are allowed to go into that space. We cannot prohibit someone outside that, those rules. We just try to work with them as best as we possibly can.
Okay, thanks. Thanks.
Long way to answer that.
Councilwoman Piana.
Yes. Will the city council get a copy of the final?
The final report is actually on our website, and I wanted to put that in the memo link, but I was having a hard time with our linkages that day when I sent the memo. So it is available on our website, and I will send out a direct link to you, so you can access it that way, because it is, it's a large report.
And for the folks at home, the website is?
Downtownferndale.com.
Well, I have to bring it up because I feel like it was written because of me. It was a direct statement in your memo in preventing the analysis to council about the housing analysis, because a year and a half ago or thereabouts, I tried to get the DDA and the city to look at doing a housing analysis of increased living in the downtown. And I know this market wasn't, market analysis didn't include a housing analysis, but a lot of the things that I saw in your presentation here was about increased living in the downtown. Add live-work to the website. So what are our types of our housing needs to provide a range of housing options, which I know we have a big solution to address some of that tonight, but that doesn't mean that we have a comprehensive review, not only for the city or the downtown, about our housing needs.
Right.
And then I wanted to point out what's not in this study, at least from what I saw, and I lament, but I have to bring it up, is that there are incentives in here to help deal with parking capacity and programs to help businesses offset the cost of parking, yet there's nothing in here about transit. So I would hope that we would have something in there, basic, to deal with our current transit system, but also planning for the future. So I just have to make that statement.
Okay. Didn't sound like a question, so I don't think you have...
Nope, nope.
Any other comments, statements, or questions from council? Well, thank you. It was very, very interesting, and I would note that there's a number of DDA board members and volunteers in the audience, I see, so thanks all of you for coming out and sharing that with us. All right. Our next item of business is a public hearing on a proposed brownfield redevelopment project at 831 East Lewiston and resolution approving combined brownfield 381 work plan. Derek, you want to introduce that briefly, and then we'll ask for a public comment.
Absolutely. The project that's here before you is one that deals with the city's brownfield program and revolving loan fund. It's something council's seen before in the past on similar-type projects. It's a medium-sized building between 7,000 and 8,000 square feet. It's been declared functionally obsolete by the Oakland County Assessor. It does have some minor contamination in it and surrounding the property. The applicant does want to redevelop the property and bring it into a more current-type use. That use has not been finalized at this point. The applicant is asking for 100,000, about $107,000 in eligible activities to be reimbursed through the city's revolving loan fund. Then in turn, the TIF created at the site would go to reimburse the loan fund and then replenish it five years after that money is reimbursed. So it's a pretty standard plan. We are asking for both the capture of local and state education tax associated with the plan. The payback period is approximately 14 to 15 years. Then there would be an additional five years capture on the back end. We still are working with the assessor on the final assessed values. After the, if the project is approved, we would enter into a reimbursement agreement with the applicant, which would be in front of you within the next few weeks, I would imagine. The applicant's environmental consultant from PM Environmental is here. He, however, is unable to be here, and we asked to go ahead and present the project tonight anyways due to some time constraints with the states and wanting to keep it moving. He did include a letter in your packet describing his project and what he is looking to do with the site. We can answer some questions about that. Obviously, we can't speak on his behalf, but we do feel it's a pretty straightforward project and encouraged him to let us bring it forward to you tonight. So with that, we are here to answer any questions. Otherwise, there is a public hearing, and then there is a motion in your packet as well.
Yeah, so first, let's do the public hearing, and I want to open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council or Derek tonight on the proposed brownfield redevelopment project at 831 East Lewiston? No. All right. So saying none, I'll close the public hearing portion of it, and I'll ask council if there are any questions or comments, concerns about this item. I mean, so as you said, it's a standard, it's a standard kind of development mechanism that we've used before?
It did appear before the brownfield authority. They did approve unanimously and recommend it be forwarded to you for approval.
I have one question, Your Honor. In the packet, it mentions about the possibility of creating the site as a live-work environment. Given that it's in the center of the industrial zone, how does that affect zoning? Will that facility have to then be rezoned in order to allow someone to actually live in that space?
It depends on how it's done, and it depends on what the primary use is with the site. Residential is not permitted as a primary use within that zoning district, but there are uses potentially that could have a residential component that's either incidental or ancillary to it. We're actually looking at that right now. And he hasn't had, he doesn't have a final use. I know it's something he's considering. The planning commission, that is an area the planning commission has looked at for more flexible zoning, so we think it fits within the intent of the master land use plan. So if we do have to move forward with either rezoning or some other creative way of doing it, we are willing to talk about it.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Motion would be in order.
I would move that city council approve the attached resolution approving the combined brownfield 381 work plan for 831 East Lewiston.
Support. Moved by Martin, supported by Lennon. Any last comments or questions? Sherlyn, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Pollica.
Yes.
Tiana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The item is adopted.
And Mr. George also asked me to pass along his thanks as well.
Thanks, Derek. All right. Our next item of business is call to audience. Call to audience is 30 minutes now and more time if needed at the end of the meeting. For anyone in the audience to have up to three minutes to speak whatever is on their minds, just give us your name and your address. Speak to things that aren't on the agenda, if you don't mind, because you'll get an opportunity to speak to the things that are on the agenda when we get to that portion of the agenda. So without further ado.
Good evening. Jeannie Davis. I'm wearing two hats tonight. The first hat is as president of the Ferndale Seniors. We're kind of proud to say, and actually a little ashamed and embarrassed to say, that we're only just now organizing what we're calling a Sunshine Brigade, and it's a group of people who have signed up to help people who are in the middle of long-term illnesses, taking people to the doctor, running to the market for them, this kind of thing. So we've actually, I initiated it at the last meeting, and 22 people signed up right on the spot to help out. And I want to thank Councilman Pollica for the idea, because I was telling him how we had been helping one of our members, and he said, "Well, I'm surprised you girls don't have a committee for that." Thank you very much, Councilman Pollica. My other hat...
Can people volunteer still, or do you feel like you have enough?
People can volunteer.
How would they do that?
And in order to be a recipient of this, you have to be a Ferndale senior, which isn't going to break the bank. It's $9 a year, so, you know, you can do that.
It's a bargain.
So, but yes, we would...
How old do you have to be to be a Ferndale senior?
You have to be 55, I believe you're...
I'm getting there.
Yes.
Look, you asked.
Straight into that one.
We'll have a banner and stretch this band when you join up here.
That's a great idea, though.
It is, indeed, and age is not a barrier to helping. We would be thrilled to have the younger people in the community sign up. There's a lot of things already, there's a lot of limitations on the people who've signed up. They can't stand for very long. I know helping this person, I experienced my first time pushing a wheelchair, and I discovered what it's like to push a wheelchair across three lanes of traffic on a salty road. It wasn't, you know, so we do, we could do with younger people, so, yeah. My other hat is I'm temporary head, or unofficial head, of the new Arts and Cultural Commission. I feel like I'm telling everybody we're getting the band back together. We had our first official meeting this evening. We kicked around a lot of ideas, and I just want to keep council informed on what we're doing. We have fundraisers already in the works. We're planning on having a coming-out party in May at Dean Box. Maybe we'll call it a shower, people bring things. A lot of people are asking me, will we bring back Music in the Park? Absolutely. We're planning on two performances at Music in the Park. We're, that's what we were talking about tonight, was ways to raise the funds for it. And we've agreed that until we get our own persona worked out, because we're not like the old Art Commission, we're looking for other groups to collaborate with. We're already in the works with the Friends of the Library. We're planning a murder mystery dinner at the library, where everybody comes in costume, et cetera. It'll be a fundraiser, and we'll split the funds. So we're thinking maybe some of the youth associations, we can collaborate with them on fundraising. So if there's anybody out there that is in a group like the Youth Assistance, we'd be happy to work with them on something, so. And on the commission at this point is Mark Burton, Joanne Wilcock, and Francine Hatcham, and Sherry Kusman-Martin, and myself.
Great.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Yeah, I applaud that. Good evening, Mary.
Good evening. My name is Mary Schusterbauer, and this evening, I'm here representing Citizens for Fair Ferndale. And our mission is to foster a community that is dedicated to the fair and equal treatment of all residents and visitors. Most of you know us already because of the wonderful candidate forums that we provide every year for every election, and I think every one of you have participated. And you may also know us for our wildly popular Good Neighbor project. This year, if you were at the DIY Festival, you saw our booth set up where we were asking people, "How will you be a good neighbor?", having them write it out and snap pictures, and it was a wonderful project. We also created a Good Neighbor resolution, which you passed unanimously, and we created pledges for citizens to talk about how they will be civil when they interact with each other. And I see that we have in the audience our esteemed county commissioner, Helene Zach, who very recently authored a proclamation celebrating Citizens for Fair Ferndale for the civility project, and we were honored to go to the board of commission meeting and receive that. But tonight, I'm here to talk about our signature project that I think, well, I think it's one of our signature projects that we've put on for the last several years, and it's called the Good Neighbors = Strong Community Awards. And that is where we recognize people in our community who are actually living out the mission of Citizens for Fair Ferndale, whether they've ever heard of us or not. They are doing things to make our community stronger and safer and more accepting for people around them. So our nominations are due this coming Friday, so that's why I'm here tonight, to make sure that you know, those of you up there, those of you in the audience or watching at home, we would like more nominations. Every year, we recognize about 10 people or organizations, and the pool is usually strong, so make your nominations as specific as you possibly can. And you might be saying, "Oh, but I'm not sure if I have a stamp. I don't know if I can get to the post office." But wait, you just need to go to fairferndale.org. Yes, that's right, fairferndale.org. Go to the website. You can look at the nomination, you can fill it out online, or you can print it and find a stamp and mail it to us. And right on the website, there are examples of past winners, and we have a whole list of frequently asked questions, and we certainly do want your nominations. And city council, you will be getting your invitation to attend, as will nominees, past nominees, and all of those folks. If you have questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions for Mary?
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Appreciate it. And Helene, you probably, did we put a switcheroo on you with the time? Is that, yeah. So we missed you at the presentations, but I had a feeling we probably didn't tell you. We're starting at 7 o'clock now.
Okay. Sorry, I missed that, but I got here. Couple of things that I just want to remind people, that every year, we approve tax deferments for those people who have to wait for their homestead check to come through. And so you can register with the city. Technically, you're supposed to register with the city by February 15th, but I'm sure we could make some exception, and that means that you can defer your tax payment after the 15th until you get your refund on homestead, particularly for low-income and seniors. Couple of big macro issues that are going to come across my commissioner desk this year. Water, okay? Obviously, this is a very hot topic. We are watching it, I'm watching it closely as your county commissioner. There are a multitude of different negotiations going on between our water resource commissioner, Jim Nash, and Brooks Patterson's deputies, you know, looking at whether it's feasible to do an authority or not. I have lots of position papers. I don't know what's going to happen. Obviously, we want to protect our interests. We don't want to have ridiculously high bills. We want to have say in water issues. I really don't have much to offer right now, but we're watching it closely, and I will keep you posted. This is the year for the smart village to go on the, you know, to come up before us. And every time I have to vote on this, I hate the opt, the opt-out thing. I certainly will try and keep it so that we could have a universal county vote. I don't know, you know, if that's possible, but I want to let you know that's coming up. And then the other big-ticket item is watching the Detroit Institute of Arts and what happens with that with the bankruptcy. As you all may recall, we voted on a millage a couple of years ago, which I heard from more people on that topic than anything in my career as county commissioner, 11 years. I totally support that millage. But if the conditions of the contract change between the county and the city, then we might have to reopen that contract, which I hope we don't have to do, but it's something that we're watching closely, and I will keep you posted on that. That's it tonight. Any questions for me?
Oh, appreciate you being here. All right. Good to see you. Anyone else? Hi.
Hi. I'll publicly speak. Tonight at Maria's, the Costa Japanese class is hosting a fundraiser to help us raise funds to go to Japan on a peace mission. One of our first stops is Hiroshima, and we have 1,000 cranes currently being made, you know, ready to go. We just need the funds to get there. So if you guys could come and support us after a very, very exciting city council meeting. It'll be super fun. We've got face painting and photography.
Can you say who you are?
I'm Rebecca Phoenix. My mom is the Jackie Smith who owns a candlestick shop. I don't think, I don't know anybody who hasn't met her, which is, which is, you know, my life. My dad's in the audience. Time to slick. Thank you very much.
Awesome. Thanks for coming. Yeah, let's clap for that. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Paul Kish, 707 West Hazelhurst. On February 19th, 2014, 287 days after I submitted my first complaint to April Lynch about the water bill, she agreed that this water bill, with its service period and redates not being aligned, is misleading and confusing. Dan Martin was at that meeting. I also requested from April Lynch at the meeting the names of the two people who presided over the board of review hearing in 2012. She agreed to forward that information to me. To date, April Lynch has not responded with that information. I submitted a document to the state of Michigan on December 31st asking for a hearing, and that board of review is part of that hearing. I was given 60 days to submit additional information. That's why I needed that. So the information that I will submit is that she failed to give me the information. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council this evening?
Hi. Good evening, council, mayor. Good to see you guys. My name is Robert Wittenberg, and I'm a candidate for the 27th House District, which includes Ferndale, and just wanted to invite you and everyone in the audience, everyone at home. We're going to have a candidate forum. It's this Thursday, the Oak Park Huntington Woods Democrats Club is hosting it, and it's going to be at the Oak Park Community Center at 7:00 PM. There are five of us, there's five candidates, so for those of you that want to kind of get to know who's going to be, you know, on the ballot in August, again, this is for the primary that's coming up in August. So this will be an event where each candidate will get to introduce themselves, talk for a few minutes, and then there'll be some questions from the audience. So just wanted to make sure everyone here knows about it, and everyone knows that they are welcome.
Date and time again?
It'll be on Thursday, so this coming Thursday, 7:00 PM, and let me just double check. I know it's, so it's at the Oak Park Community Center, which is at 14300 Oak Park Boulevard.
Excellent.
So just want to let you know.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address council this evening? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are items that we consider routine and we enact in one motion unless council pulls something from the consent agenda. Let me read that agenda now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held February 24th, 2014, and the special meeting held March 3rd, 2014. Item B is the approval of the reimbursement agreement for 965 Wanda Combined Brownfield Plan. Item C is the adoption of the amended local government approval resolution to clarify approval of request from Gigabyte Inc. Doing Business as a Flytrap for an on-premises redevelopment liquor license to be located at 22950 Woodward Avenue. Item D is the approval of a special event permit for National Main Street Conference welcoming reception on Saturday, May 17th, 2014. Item E is the approval of a special event permit for Girls on the Run 5K to be held on Sunday, May 18th, 2014. Item F is the approval to purchase Cisco Network equipment. Item G is the approval of the bills and payroll submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of the council finance committee. What is the pleasure of council this evening on the consent agenda?
I move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
I support.
Moved by Lennon and supported by Piana. Is there any discussion, either from members of the audience or from council, on the consent agenda this evening? Cheryl, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Polica.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Martin is momentarily absent, and Mayor Colter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Regular agenda item A is the consideration to appoint Everett Kaiser to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And Councilman Polica, do you want to introduce that item as our liaison to that committee?
I sure can. Well, Mr. Kaiser has submitted an application to be on the Parks and Rec Board, and I request that you support his appointment. He is very energetic about being on the commission. Right now, he's very involved in the Dale's, do you call it the Dale's Block Club?
The Dale's, the Dale's Group.
The Dale's Group, okay. Very active in that, so I think it's a nice marriage of someone in a community that has a passion for the neighborhood he's in, and also going to bring some of that energy onto the Parks Commission. And I don't know, Everett's here, if he wants to get up and say a word or two, or just wave.
Good evening.
So I've lived in Ferndale for about 11 years or so, and I have not seen the parks really improved in that time. And in the last five years, I have a very good reason to see them improve. So I'd like to see those playgrounds get better, see the parks a little bit more vibrant before my son's too old to play on them.
Thank you. As would we. And I appreciate, you know, last year, we did the Blue Ribbon Committee on Parks, and you gave great input into that, and we hope to implement some of those things this year. So hope to see better things for our parks, but appreciate your willingness to serve on that committee.
I just wanted to mention that Everett and I co-founded the Dale's Neighborhood Group, so in the last year and a half, we've worked very closely together, so I certainly know his work ethic. And to me, this is just a natural progression that he ends up on the Parks and Recreation Department, since he's been the main voice of our neighborhood on parks. So I really appreciate you going a step further and doing more community service above and beyond the Dale's Group.
And for people who don't know, his wife is also actively involved in our city as our city librarian, in case that last name sounded familiar to you. Any other discussion on this item? A motion would be in order?
I would like to make the motion to confirm the appointment of Everett Kaiser to the Ferndale Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term ending December 31st, 2016.
Support. Moved by Polica, supported by Martin? Yeah. All right, any further discussion or comments?
Cheryl, Lynn? Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. The appointment is adopted. Thank you again. Regular agenda, item B is a consideration to set a public hearing date of March 24th, 2014, for the DNR grant applications. Do you want to take that, or I know Jill is here, or she was? Yep, Jill, do you want to introduce that item for us? Thanks.
Good evening.
Our mic is like, has issues tonight.
It's got a mind of its own today.
We are currently working on two Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund grant applications for park improvements at both Martin Road Park and Harding Park. Each application proposes a permanent walking path and a new place structure, both of which will be in compliance with ADA requirements and are sure to increase park usage and accessibility throughout our parks. Both of those items are key factors in our current Parks and Recreation Plan, are listed as priorities, both in the plan, and the proposed projects are also part of our capital improvement plan as well. The deadline to apply for these grants is April 1, and as part of the application process is required that we set a public hearing to take comments on the application. So that is the request that you see before.
Very good. Thanks. Any questions on this item?
Good luck.
Yeah, we're crossing our fingers on that one, Jill.
Yep, bringing that one home. All right, is there a motion?
I make a motion to set a public hearing date of March 24th, 2014, at 7:00 PM to take comments regarding the submittal of a Department of Natural Resources Trust Grant, I'm sorry, Trust Fund Grant for improvements at Harding Park and Martin Road Park.
I support.
Moved by Polica, supported by Piana. Any other discussion, questions? Cheryl, call the roll.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Polica?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on to our final regular agenda, item C is a consideration to approve an exclusive negotiating rights agreement for the redevelopment of city-owned property. And Derek, you can introduce that item this evening?
Yes, gladly. Good evening again. I'm here tonight to introduce a topic that's been discussed at some length in the downtown and the city over the last few years. The city is currently in receipt of two, what we're calling exclusive negotiating rights agreements, which basically either agreement opens up a window for exclusive negotiation regarding a piece of city property. The first agreement we'll refer to as the City Center Project is one that's been discussed for some time in the city. It deals with the eastern portion of the Withington Lot. It is a, in concept, a parking deck and residential project. The second project is one that's a little more extensive. It's one that staff has been involved in and actually has been part of the discussions with for some time now. It is a, we'll refer to that as the 360 Project as we go forward. Both groups have submitted the exclusive negotiating rights agreements. The 360 Project deals with both the entirety of the Withington Lot and the Troy Lot as well, and includes components of office, apartment or residential, and parking decks. Both projects are only here tonight to discuss the exclusivity. We're not here at this point to actually negotiate the specific above-ground developments. We're actually here to take a look at both agreements and consider one to move forward with for a specific window of time. The City Center Project is requesting six months currently to negotiate for a development or development agreement on that site. The 360 Project is looking at a longer time. It is a much larger project potentially. They are requesting 18 months at this time. There is a recommendation from staff regarding the projects. Staff at this time is recommending to move forward with the 360 Group. That is in large part due to one component of the project or the potential for one component, and that is that group is interested in looking to bring high-tech and second-stage office to the city. And we think that's a compelling enough reason to at least investigate it at this time. We're not making, again, we're not here making a recommendation that we're saying one project is going to work and one project isn't. We believe both projects offer great opportunity for the downtown at this time. We think both projects are viable. We think both projects fit within the city council's goals and objectives, within the city's master land use plan, within the DDAs' goals and objectives and strategies. We think both projects are an opportunity to just move forward in a public-private type partnership to see the next evolution of our downtown and hopefully provide some of that mixed use and parking that we've been talking about for so long. So I think at this point, I know, I think both groups are going to speak for a couple of minutes. I'm going to step back and may I let you introduce who you'd like to speak with first, and then obviously, we'll be here to answer, unless there's some questions right now up front.
I know there are representatives of both development groups, so I guess we'll just take them in the order that we got them in our pack. So the BezTech folks, why don't you come on up and introduce yourselves and explain a little bit about your project?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Sam Beznos. I'm with the BezTech Companies. Thank you for having us. I'm excited to be here, and I appreciate your consideration on our project. I'm also here with Bob Wolfson, who I've been working with very closely on this project, who you guys may know, who has been actively pursuing the development of the Withington Lot for many years. As Derek indicated, we proposed a letter of intent to exclusively negotiate with the city for six months on a proposed development on the lot. And in concept, without getting too much detail, we were proposing 100 residential units, basically on the eastern side of the lot, that's sort of split, as well as a parking garage that would satisfy the city's need, which we believe there's a need for additional parking, and accommodate future needs as well, and also accommodate the parking for the residential development. And we believe that is the best use for the project and most feasible, and that's why we're here today. We've been working with Newman Smith, who did a number of iterations, but, you know, this is not exactly the format of it. But basically, the development was proposing potentially a couple stories of parking garage, as well as residential on top, somewhere between three, four stories. It would vary based on the needs of the parking. BezTech, I'm the CEO and one of the partners, I'm one of the CEO and partners of BezTech, and we've been nationwide real estate developer. We've developed more than 15,000 apartment units. We build them, design them from the ground up. We do apartments, senior housing, commercial, office, lot developments, and we do it all. And I provided a package that I think you guys all saw, some of our recent developments and stuff we've done historically around this town, as well as around the country. So we looked at this site. I spent a lot of time personally in Ferndale and love here, I love it, you know, I come to dinner, go out, and I think it's the right development for this town. There needs to be more housing, and we think this is really the most appropriate use. We consider other uses as well, but given the cost of construction and, you know, rents in the area for office and retail and the visibility, we thought this was the most feasible. So, you know, I'm here to answer any questions you might have, but I also think to introduce Bob Wolfson, who I'm working with closely on this development. He probably has a few things to say.
Thanks. Hi, Bob.
Hi, everybody. I think everybody pretty much knows me. The only thing I can say is we've been involved in Ferndale for pretty close to six years now, and enjoyed being the first guys to do something in the market. In addition, we've lived it and breathed it. My children live here, I live here. And, you know, I think that the BezTech Corporation definitely has the experience to do the right thing for this city, and we're looking forward to the opportunity of doing so. All I can tell you is, is I think that the city is going to grow, it's going to do well, and we'd like to be a part of it again.
Thanks, Bob.
Any questions?
Not yet. We'll get to that portion. And now I know there are also representatives of the other development group, the 360 Ferndale Group, and so there they are in the back. If you guys want to come on up and briefly describe for us your concept again, and just so people know, we're not getting into details here. We haven't figured out square footage and doors and windows and that sort of thing, but in general, what is your vision for your project?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, as well as the staff and residents of Ferndale. My name's Jake Siegel. I live in Ferndale with my wife, we're at the corner of Academy and Hilton. Lived here for about seven years now, and I started my business in Ferndale. I started a company out of my guest bedroom in 2008, and long story short, we just sold the company to Ford in October of this year as a software company putting apps into cars. I have a lot of experience with the tech community, with being an entrepreneur, with the needs of these tech companies, in automotive and beyond, financial tech, all sorts of the startups and second-stage companies that are around the area. And what I've found in my business is it's very hard to hire software engineers and other young tech talent, to get them to stay in Michigan. So people that are graduating from University of Michigan, Michigan State, Kettering, and a whole lot of other great universities, they're flocking away. And what I saw in Ferndale, and most of this has been seen from my bike, and, you know, as my wife and I ride around, is that there's an opportunity here. There's an opportunity to create a really cool tech scene, very much like what we have in downtown Detroit with Detroit Venture Partners, which Dan Gilbert was also one of our investors in Livio prior to the acquisition. What we see in Midtown and what we've seen, quite frankly, in most other cities our size, is growth opportunities within the tech community. So I, like most Ferndale residents, want to see better parking and want to see an easy way to get downtown. I also think that, you know, having residential is key, but I think the real opportunity here is creating jobs, and you create more density and create collisions downtown. So I'd like to see an opportunity to bring in more tech talent into this downtown area and really create a nice place for our tech community to have. And that's what started this whole project. So I'll turn it over to Dennis to talk a little bit about our project and our development team.
Thank you very much. I'm Dennis Griffin with CBRE, based out of Southfield, and thank you very much for allowing me to be here and explain kind of what I've come up with after being invited to look at this opportunity. One of my colleagues, Matt Osekki, had met Jake Siegel and Derek Delacourt, and said there's an opportunity to fill some voids in the city of Ferndale. So I came and looked at it from a very classic sense. I met with Jake, listened to his vision, his experience. It's not every day that you can get right with the CEO, someone coming into the second, third-stage funding, and get their direct experience. We have those as tenant clients at CBRE, but not the time to get what's cutting edge. So from that, I looked at the vision, listened to it, and understood it, and then I went and looked at the real estate, and I asked Derek to submit, you know, all of the public pieces of property in the area. And there's several, there's several opportunities, immediate and in the future. So what I So what I kind of framed it is a 360 view of the entire area, and that's where the name has come from. And our original focus was on the east side because we could see real immediate adjacencies. And then, looking further, I focused on the Troy Street lot and the Withington lot. Those are the current infrastructure pieces that are kind of servicing your downtown. I know they get congested on weekends. So we kind of approached it as an infrastructure-first type of analysis. I said, okay, we'll start with the infrastructure and we need more. So we said, those are the areas that can support, you know, affordable, larger decks. Said, okay, with that, how can we use that infrastructure to add on city needs? And all suburban, urban areas are thirsting for office. Daytime population, new families, growth, badges of honor when you have companies like Jake's. So we interjected an office component second, and there's some very interesting opportunities in how to make new office product affordable, and that's sharing infrastructure. You can share foundations, you can share elevators, you can share streetscapes, you can share utility hookups. So that's kind of an approach on how to have an economic alternative to a Southfield, which there's plenty of vacant spaces, some of them are called free. So nothing's going to be free in a new development, but there's quality of life, there's quality of hiring, there's quality of entrepreneurship that'll make people approach a 360-type development. And we agree, housing is a component. That's the classic mixed-use housing, very little bit of retail in our concept because you have plenty of retail, plenty of buildings that can have a higher use, as we heard from the DDA. The infrastructure-first component can help lift everything for all stakeholders. So that's kind of, I don't make sure I didn't miss any notes there. Yeah, so that's, going back, the client contact division, that was Jake. I did a classic review of the market dynamics in the real estate and came up with a concept and had Kriegerclatt Architects, you know, validate my program. Again, these buildings work, you know, with the parking component, and it appears that it's earnest of, worthy of more earnest investigation. Then the next step for me was, who's a development team that can pull this together? And that's when we tapped Greg Ernie from Versa and Greg Cooksey from CG Emerson, who have experience in urban and suburban development and are very compatible and have experience in public-private partnerships. So that's where we are today, and we look forward to the opportunity to roll up our sleeves and work with you.
Thank you. Thanks. Don't go too far because there'll probably be some questions, I'm guessing, so if you could...
Just as a quick point, we know this has been difficult for both groups, once they became aware of each other. From a staff standpoint, it's been, it's been a kind of a joy working with both of them. They both have great ideas for the downtown. As far as, again, why we're here tonight is, we really like the opportunity to move forward and discussions. We're at the infancy stage, very initial first-step stage. In the staff report to City Council, what we've suggested is that if this exclusivity window is open with either group, that the next steps would be to immediately engage the city's planning commission, potentially with a planned unit development option, which allows the city to negotiate development agreements that would run with the land for the projects. That is a very public and open and transparent process as it deals with review of the site. There are public hearings involved, and we believe that most likely that is the best way to move forward. And then possibly concurrently, we spoke to the city attorney that as it comes to dealing with potential sale of the property, that there be a concurrent development agreement or a component of the PUD that is negotiated with City Council that deals with the actual sale of the property and potential acquisition of large-scale public infrastructure components. So those would be the two concurrent processes we would recommend moving forward with, regardless of which project you guys decide to go forward with at this point. So obviously, we would be naive if we thought this was a very simple process. Either one of these projects will have their obstacles. We look forward to discussing either one of them, but we think this is a good first step and a good opportunity for the city to move forward, so.
Okay. So I'm going to just guess that there may be some folks here tonight that want to address council on this issue. So before council debates and ask questions, I will give the, I will give, I give the audience an opportunity to ask questions first. So yes, give us your name in three minutes.
Jerry Wells, 315 West Troy, and there are other West Troy people as well. We do talk to each other quite a lot, and when the, I believe that both sides of Nine Mile Road do need to have some parking structures. What I've noticed is there's a lot of vacant parking north of Nine Mile Road, and most of the bars and such are on the south side of Nine Mile Road, and that's really where we have a great deal of overflow parking. When we were going through this before on the West Troy Street parking lot, a possible building, we neighbors really liked the fact that they listened to us when we were talking about egress, where are people coming out of the parking area? Don't dump them into our neighborhood, and so they revised their plans. So we don't really have a problem with something being built there and something being built on the other side, but at that point is when you have the opportunity to the residential-only parking. And right now, Withington, more than anything, because there's all those parking spaces that are empty, not having the money contribute to this parking fund while all the residential side is filled up, and then our residential sides on West Troy and Saratoga are just full of other people's cars who are avoiding parking. So at that point, the only way they're going to use these parking structures is if they're made to do that, by giving us a residential-only. And that's it for now.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else like to address council on these, on this issue? Good evening.
Hello. I'm in between bifocals and regular glasses, so I think most of you know me, Mindy Couples, 354 East Marshall. I was undecided on whether I was going to say anything tonight. I'm glad that I came to this meeting. I think mostly everybody knows me and knows I have an interest as a resident in downtown Ferndale. Alls I would, alls I would say is that I would, I would like council to consider not just, obviously, we need a parking structure that is, that's obvious. The residents want one. I would encourage council to think about and work with both of these developments to consider where, really where those structures should be and where they would look the best. Personally, I think this lot right next door would be ideal for a loft, retail, parking area, or even business. I think it would have the lowest impact on residents, although if anything, a parking structure would help the people right behind this building. As you know, I mean, there's a lot of issues during the, on the weekends with parking on their streets also. I think it would be, it would help in, having a structure like that would help in beautifying the city and expanding it withwise, as well as the downtown district at least. And I guess that's all I wanted to mention today. I really had like three pages written, getting kind of late, and I get up really early, so I just wanted to, you know, at least say what I had to say about the idea, and I look forward to other public meetings and any other involvement that you guys may have with the residents and businesses and the developments.
And if people don't know, you're also a board member of the DDA and will certainly be engaging the DDA board and business owners in this process, so you will hear a lot more. Anyone else who would like to address council this evening? Good evening. Good to see you.
Good to see you. My name's John. I'm a Ferndale resident and I'm also the owner of Modern Natural Baby. I have two shocking, two shocking secrets today, right? Dramatic pause. The first thing is, the first thing with what we have is, with, hold on, let me get my train of thought here. The first thing is with parking. With being, being a retailer, with parking, here's the secret: we don't have a parking problem. And why is that? Because we don't have a lot of residential in our area, right? So our hours are between 10 and 6. So when you tell us that there's a possibility that you're going to put a structure right in front of us, that's a little shocking to us. And I think it's one of those things is, when you're a retail space, and I think that's what we're always, we're trying to do, is a mixed bag, to have retail and bars and restaurants. But what happens when you put a parking structure there is you put obstacles in the way for people making a purchase. For retail, you want to make that, that purchase as quick as possible without obstacles. You put a parking deck, and all of a sudden, what you do is, people who want to bring retail in your, in your area won't do it because they see a parking structure. Would we have moved into Ferndale if there was a parking structure there? The answer is no. The second secret is, is our, we do Modern Natural Baby, right? Non-natural baby stores don't do well in a lot of places in the United States. But not only do we do well, but we're thriving, right? So what I'm saying to you is, retail works in Ferndale, and I think if we can get that message that retail actually does work, what we can do is we can have, we can have that evening business and that daytime business. We are thriving. We're one of the largest natural baby stores in the United States. And why? It's because of Ferndale. It wouldn't work in any other community except maybe Ann Arbor and Ferndale. So I think what we have to do is we have to push that retail and say, all right, what we need is we need 10 to 6 type of business, opposed to saying, if you put up a parking structure, what happens is you get more bar business. Why? Because now more people can come to the area, and the owners look at that and say, we have plenty of parking spaces, of course we can do two or three more bars. If we want to go in that direction to become Royal Oak, then that's what we do. But what I see is a retail during the day where our streets are thriving, and if we can do that and then have business, bar business and restaurant business thriving as well, we don't lose the essence of what Ferndale is. And I think that's always going to be the thing, is we have to make sure not to lose what makes us special besides great cities like Royal Oak, but I want to make sure that we don't just jump into things and put an eyesore right in front of a building where my, my customer doesn't want to bring their kids because they have to go down a ramp or go into a section and instead just doesn't want to visit it. In the current condition, it's a thriving retail business. I think we have to keep that in mind.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Anyone else like to address council this evening on this item? Good evening.
My name is Emily Murray. I live at 210 East Camborn, and I own Modern Natural Baby as well, at 200 West Nine Mile. So obviously, my husband just spoke, but I have a little, just a different perspective on, I'm just concerned, Withington, the Withington lot, I don't think it can handle a parking structure. It's too close to the buildings, whereas like the Troy lot is across the street, and I think a structure would work a lot better there. I'm concerned that my customers who park in the back will never even see my business. They won't know where I'm at because there's going to be a gigantic structure in front of it. And I just, I just don't see how that, and the Withington lot, I don't, especially during retail hours, it doesn't need more parking spaces. I can never find a space in the Troy lot. I've never had a problem finding a space in the Withington lot. So that's just my concern, is that it's, it's just too close to the building to be, you know, functional. Like John said, my customers have babies and children, they're pregnant. At one point, when we talked about parking, you know, before I mentioned even having, you know, like pregnant mother parking spaces, and this is like the opposite of that, because now my pregnant women can't park as close to my store as they can. They have to park on the top floor of a deck or something, and it's just a lot of walking to do with small children and that, and, I mean, obviously, that's, you know, specific to my business, but I'm one of the largest businesses on Nine Mile, so I just wanted to express my concern with the structure in the Withington lot.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to address council on this issue? Good evening.
Hello. Chris Best, Rust Belt Market, resident in Ferndale. I don't really have a question. I think it's exciting. Also, I'm the owner of Rust Belt Market, I think, did I just say that?
You did. But it's a nice store, say it twice.
I just was, I was just curious, before everybody gets worked up about the coming structure or the business, I love the idea of tech component in the future that it could bring to Ferndale. I think it's exciting stuff. The question is, is when? Just, maybe I could have reserved this question until after the meeting, but just out of curiosity, if somebody wants to, which, I'm sure there's individual...
Well, hang tight, and we'll talk about that, because we need to debate the length of the agreement and the length of the...
That's all I have to say. I think it's great.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Chris. Anyone else? Yeah.
My question about the agreement is probably more for Derek. By entering into the agreement, does the city automatically need to take what development comes out of it? Or, you know, is there an out for the city?
And we're going to talk about what we're committing to, what we would be committing to, what our options are, and so. Good question, but hang tight, we, that will be addressed. Anyone else? All right. So now it's council's opportunity to ask questions and comments, and I'm guessing, I was just guessing that they would address some of these. If not, I will ask your questions for you, but I'm guessing that those things will come up. So who would like to begin?
I will.
Councilwoman, piano.
So I wanted to sort of, I wanted to start out macro about where we are and where I think we're going, and it's been mentioned by Derek about these two proposals and where we are in our downtown, and I say, this is downtown 3.0, and we've been preparing for this type of moment for a very long time, especially in response to the downturn in the real estate market, where we have been actively trying to find and attract development into our community to address the shared interests that we've heard for over the last 10 years about our goals and objectives of the downtown. So in my opinion, you know, redeveloping these, these properties, these sites, is part of setting a redevelopment site vision for, for our downtown. And since, we've been working on improving our economic development strategy so that when these proposals came to council, we would be ready to go, meaning that it would be an easy process working with the developer. And so for me, preparing for this moment is achieving some of our visions for the downtown, which is increasing, increasing the number of housing types and options for people to live in our downtown, increasing the number of families in our downtown, attracting more retail in our downtown, which is something that the DDA has been actively trying to do, particularly during the downturn, and we've been successful because of a lot of entrepreneurs. And we're really trying to improve the pedestrian experience, because it's much better to walk next to a building than an empty lot with cars in it. And so to me, it's about improving the pedestrian experience and fulfilling the goals and vision of where we were trying to go in the last 10 years. And so for me, I'm really excited by these two proposals. I'm very happy that you're here, finally. We have a long way to go. This is just step one of a very long journey with our residents, but I wanted to make sure that, what I heard tonight, and, is that we're not to lose what Ferndale, what makes Ferndale special, and I hear this a lot from a lot of our business owners. And so can we do infill development, and can we build higher buildings following our zoning ordinance without losing who we are, without losing Ferndale's creativity and DNA? And I say yes, but it's going to be a good partner with the developer that we do that with. So I think this is the journey where we start with, with whoever we choose tonight, that we set these expectations. And so one thing that I'm looking for, which isn't in the agreement, but I want to set the expectation now, and I'm sure you all have heard me say it, is that we really need to have a strong public participation plan going forward, not just doing the basics of doing outreach. If the public is expected to only come to the site plan review hearing to hear what's going on with the project, then I think we failed in terms of doing good outreach to our businesses and residents as we go through figuring out what this change in our downtown is going to look like. And we work with the design and with the developers, and so that's what I'm looking for, and, you know, we're going to have to explain what the PUD process is, the Planned Unit Development Process, because we haven't used that tool in a really long time, because we haven't had the opportunity to do it. So that's sort of where I am in terms of setting the macro level of where we are with these exclusive, with these agreements and where it could lead to, and how... And how, how do we interact with our, our citizens about how this is going to look like? So that's sort of where I am now.
On that point, let me ask Derek, could you just briefly walk us through a little bit of the timeline and the, and the touch points where residents and businesses have an opportunity for input? And that's sort of the minimum, and I'm, I'm hearing you that there's opportunity for additional, but sort of walk us through how people will be able to input into this process?
Absolutely. I mean, I think it goes without saying that a project, either one of these projects is a rather large scale project. And one of the things we're going to do in short order is come up with a, a public participation plan that goes along with the project if we do go forward. That's part of the reason it's so important and we're recommending so strongly that at least one of the agreements we move forward, so we know what we're dealing with, what the project may look like, what the scope and size of it is, so we can start to put that together. The formal process through the PUD process, I would assume would, would involve at least a formal approval process, multiple meetings with the planning commission. Their goal or their responsibility in this would be to discuss the above ground development itself, the design of building handles many of the issues that were brought up tonight by the folks from Modern Natural Baby and some of the other retailers that are concerned. And give them an opportunity to make sure that if there is a design and if there is a structure and if there is, whether it's just residential or whether it's an office component as well, that that has as little negative impact, if any at all, on their existing operations and hopefully can be done in a way that in, in the long term enhances their operation. We certainly understand the concerns that have been presented here tonight, they're valid, they're real. Anytime you do a development like this, it can have an impact on your existing retailers and other users. But those discussions would take place with the planning commission. We also think, I'm sure the planning commission as well as councilman and councilwoman Piana is on that, on the commission, is going to want to see us do some additional public outreach. And we'd like to meet with them as soon as possible, see what they feel is appropriate and have that discussion with them as well, whether it's only at the planning commission meeting, whether it's some workshops, whether it's some joint meetings with city council and brownfield authority, if there's, if there's brownfield components, whatever those are, we'd like to put those together in short order. But I, I think you can, at, at a minimum depend on that, and I would expect a considerable amount more going forward.
Thanks.
And then if I may, I have more questions, but I'll, I'll let, I'll let other people talk after I say this bit. I'm really excited about the expanded project. I think we need to go down that path to say, hey, will this expanded project with office space work in our downtown? And if it doesn't, take a step back and say, okay, we have another opportunity with another developer, how does this fit into, to the mix of options and choices that we can, we can make for doing development? And I'm also a little concerned about the 18 month timeline for the second project because there's a six month wait period for BezTech and then there's an 18 month. And I'm just concerned that would be tying up opportunity for 18 months. It's almost two years. And I'm not sure our, our businesses want to wait two years to even start a project. I mean, like shovels in the ground.
If I could piggyback off of what councilwoman Piana said, I, I'm very uncomfortable with 18 months as well because it seems like a, a long amount of time that we're going to be engaged in this study and to tie things up and it plays havoc with all kinds of things, right? Not only the businesses downtown waiting to see what happens, but with the real estate market about what it'll look like in the area down the road. And a lot of, may fuel, I think, some speculation around that. So I would like to see us address that 18 month timeframe under, under one proposal. I am very excited about both proposals. I'll take one step back before I go on. I think it's fantastic that these folks with both components who are Ferndale residents want to invest in the downtown. And this is incredibly exciting and leads into a, a longer term vision for the city and the downtown. Because, I mean, these are big projects and these are game changers in, in what's available downtown in many ways. But I too don't have a concern that we would lose the character and nature of who we are in Ferndale from either of them, particularly with the type of process we're talking about with, with extensive public input. And because it's, by nature of who we are, and that's what makes Ferndale attractive, I think, to so many, to so many developers and businesses, and suddenly the economy is turning around to the point where this, this kind of movement makes more sense. So I think that's, that's exciting and I'm confident that we can continue to be Ferndale before, during and after all of this process and transition. However, tied to the 18 months, I do, what I don't see addressed in these agreements, and maybe it's a document outside of that, but I think we need to be very clear about milestones through this process, whether we say it's six, 12 or 18 months. And, and, and of course we'll touch base throughout this process as we go, but I think that we need to have some discussion as well at some point about if at six or eight months or wherever we're at in there, that we feel that things aren't progressing on either side as perhaps we thought we would, what are our options there at that point? Or, or how do we know before it's the end of the agreement that we have something, in the exclusivity agreement, that we have something that may not work? Where's the, the pressure valve in that process? So, so we're touching base, but in a really organized and measured fashion, what are those metrics that we should look at through this? I think that's a really important component that needs to be a part of this. Because it, it would be, I think, a waste on all parties' times that if we get to month 12 or six or 18 or whatever and we find, oh, we didn't make it, and we could have headed this off six, eight months ago.
As a staff, I would say to both comments about the time and the benchmarks, we would agree, 18 months is maybe a little long. And actually, I think for either project, six months is a little short, probably, to get to the point where we're comfortable either with development agreements or planned unit development agreements, to have those approval in hand would be our goal. My quick take is, is to get those benchmarks, that's exactly why we're here tonight, is to start that discussion with one group as to what that's going to be and what that's going to look like. As, as to where it should be, earlier on the agenda, we talked about a development agreement. And I, my opinion, and I would defer to the city attorney, is if whoever we do work with exclusively, that one of the next steps would be a development agreement that could set those, those benchmarks for the development going forward. And I would defer to Dana to use a comment if he thinks that's appropriate.
Well, just, just on that issue, certainly that's one place they could be, or they could be in this proposed exclusivity provision, which has benchmarks right there. And in the event certain steps aren't met, then the city or either party would be able to exercise and back out of the proposal. So.
Well, so let me ask.
Development agreement is one thing, but that, that's probably, in all likelihood, going to be down the road prior to that being completed and developed. And if council's concerned with making sure that everything is on track and consistent with its vision, perhaps issues along those lines of exit strategy should be incorporated into the exclusivity provision with, with either party.
I do have a suggestion and question, or a suggestion, and I'm going to be looking for it. And it may not happen before we, we sign the development agreement, but I am looking for an analysis of entitlements, particularly if we're giving away land for very low cost or we're getting a brownfield incentive by the state. So, you know, I think it would be helpful if council considered hiring a qualified technical expert to review their numbers, particularly if they are getting incentives. And you can't get an incentive from the state MEDC or else, you know, the state agencies without putting all your cards on the table. And for me, while, you know, we're here to make sure that we're, these projects meet the vision of, of the downtown, at the end of the day, we got to make sure the city's getting a balanced and reasonable deal, that we're not going to get hosed. And so, so, you know, I have a healthy appreciation for developers. You're here to make a profit, you're, you're here to make a return on investment, they're not a nonprofit. But at the end of the day, balanced and reasonable deal is what I'm looking for. So, so an analysis of an outside technical expert, particularly with the office space, because we need to make sure that, you know, that can be, that you can bring in the tenants for, for your second and third stage technology companies. That's the real risky part here, I think, of this development project. And I don't think that's, you know, no secret.
Jake, Jake, I'm going to ask you that, and thinking back on what councilwoman Piana said. Describe just a little bit about what a second stage technology company is, why you think they, that, what your connection to those folks are and why, I mean, because there is a glut of otherwise Class A office space and this is something different, right? And so talk a little bit about your vision of the office space, which does make your, your proposal uniquely different than, than the other.
Right. Well, I mean, it really comes down to a balance. So first addressing what a second stage company is, these are companies that are later, second stage meaning later on in their business. So usually when you have a startup like, like my company in 2008, it's, you know, a few people in a guest bedroom, maybe in a garage, getting started. They usually would receive angel capital, usually under a million dollars, and with some state matching funds, and move into a series A financing round. Once you get to about $2 to $3 million in revenue, which we were at after about three years in our business, you become what's considered second stage. So these are companies that are posed for growth. These are the companies that create the most jobs within our tech sector. And these are also companies that service the larger, the larger tech industries, the automotive industry around here, the financial tech communities. So what we've seen within the second stage, these are companies that are post-series A. They're usually doing debt financing or mezzanine financing. And there's a lot of, a lot of growth in these businesses. And the challenge they have, it's not finding office space. I mean, you can find office space in Troy. It's, it's finding, finding talent and finding jobs. And it's getting families to come back. So, you know, one of the things that I mentioned is about keeping talent here. One of the biggest draws and the conversations that I have within the tech industry and in my industry, it's the Consumer Electronics Association, is, is getting people back. So if you're, if you're working a job and, you know, you're in your, you know, 30s, you're, you're married and you're having a family, at some point, you're going to want to come back where, where your grandparents are at. And, and that's one of the big pulls for these second stage businesses that are hiring. So startups and incubation, that's there, there's a place for that. That's not what I think Ferndale needs per se. I mean, Tech Town has that in Midtown, there's Automation Alley and our Spark for those types of businesses. But for companies that have 50 to 150 employees, those are the second stage companies that are growing, that have job vacancies, that are looking for affordable housing, and they need to acquire talent that are looking for that, that overall package. So.
And I'm guessing these are well-paying jobs?
Yes. I mean, the average salary for someone coming out of college is upwards of $100,000 in the software field. And, and that's a, that's a significant challenge even hiring those people right here in Metro Detroit. So we've had great success at Livio, now part of Ford, hiring those folks and, and we sell Ferndale. You know, I'm not from Michigan, I grew up in Ohio, I lived in Florida, I lived in New England. And when I moved here, I, I chose Ferndale because of the package, because of the overall value. And arguably, you could say there's a similar thing in Royal Oak, but there isn't the feel and there isn't that, you know, personality that you get from this community. And second stage companies can provide extensive growth. So, you know, yeah, we'd, we'd love to have a, like a Google or an Apple or a Tesla be an anchor tenant for one of these positions. But I speak to so many CEOs and so many directors of larger corporations that are saying, you know, we need space in the Metro Detroit area to acquire top talent. And second stage companies that are looking to grow, they're saying, you know, they, they need affordable office space, but they need to hire this, this talent. So for me, it's not so much about the second stage companies, it's about creating jobs. And that's what, that's what this is all about. You create jobs, you have the right people down here. That's how you grow it. And Ferndale is, is ripe for, for that opportunity.
Thank you.
I have a question. The demand is there now, today, I understand that, but if approved, this process is going to take quite some, some time. You'd look at two to three years at the minimum for people to be able to move into these offices. Can you guarantee that the demand is going to be there in two to three years?
No, there's no guarantees. And, and you know, anyone that told you there was a guarantee just wouldn't be being honest or they're not well-educated. So you have to believe in it. And, you know, that's what makes second stage companies and startups thrive, and that's what makes this country great for innovation, is just believing in it. Now, one of the, the plus sides of this, and, you know, speaking from, you know, working with, with large automakers, now part of Ford, but working with GM and, and alike, is that it takes a few years to get the technology in cars. And in healthcare, it takes many years to get through the right approvals. So the decisions that are being made today, you don't know what this is going to look like 10 years down the road, but a decision that's made today from an automotive manufacturer is valid for at least three to five years. So that mitigates quite a bit of the risk. And I just want to say on record that, you know, from a exclusivity perspective, you know, we want to be getting started as soon as possible, and I'm sure any developer would. Nobody wants to sit on this and, and just take, take resources. So I, I know that for, from a timing perspective, we want to be going as fast as possible. And, and part of the reason that, that I chose this development team for this idea that I started on a year and a half ago, was that we had the capability to bring in companies now and put them in places now as we build this project out. So we wouldn't just, just like you guys want to sit around and wait for, you know, 18 months, see what happens, we wouldn't want to sit around for 18 months and say, oh, great, we're ready to build, let's start talking to people. I mean, that wouldn't be productive for anybody.
Are, are you comfortable if we condense the 18 months? How, how, where would you start getting uncomfortable?
Well, that's a question I really would want to defer to Dana's on.
The 18 months is meant to keep momentum and success. We wrote a cover letter to you, again echoing what Jake said, we'd like to go as quickly and keep a rhythm to make smart moves and smart design. I'm going to step back and think and tip some of the program of what I've done with 360. You know, the office component is meant to be defensively diverse, if that makes sense, where I've recommended and the development team agrees with, you know, three buildings with varying floor plates, you know, from 30,000 feet to 20,000 feet to 10,000 feet. So that's a kind of a, a market mix of office space that if tech changes, healthcare changes, you could find that being filled with a whole host of business types. It could be financial services, it could be legal, it could be accounting, it could be tech, it could be incubator on a single floor, it could be shared office space like a Regis or the like. So that's my job to be technically defensive on the plan. The timing is simply you look at the approval calendar for municipality. And that's when you actually can start showing drawings. It could be 60 days on the early side to have a representative set, depending on what requirements are for the municipality, to have a planning commission approval. If we're talking about public outreach, which I agree with, you know, Jake is in town, he's going to get, would, you know, hopefully get reached out to all the time, you know, for those type of discussions. So it's meant to keep a momentum and a success. Checkpoints, we love the idea because it actually makes sure that you're keeping up with us, frankly. So 18 months is a success schedule, 12 months. It could be acceptable, I believe, as long as we have a provision that everything is keeping momentum. What if we need an extra three or four or five months? Maybe an acceptable extension provision. And you're going to know whether we're getting along, whether this is something that's, we're simpatico or we're at odds. And, you know, in this marketplace, in this development team, they have options. You know, they're sought after for suburban, urban, they're busy, but this is something that they believe in. So again, you'll know 12 months as long as there's a provision. Hopefully it can go faster, but I just really haven't seen a project of this scale go quicker than 12 months.
Derek, did you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I do, I do for timeframe, especially from a city staff point. Just, just having dealt with large scale projects and PUDs before in the past, 12 months is aggressive for either project. If we are shooting for planning commission approvals at the end of that window. I would have no problem with either project being a 12 month window with checkpoints. And we're, we're excited to, you know, start talking to either group about what those checkpoints are because they'll look different depending on which direction we go in. But I would ask that either one of them have the ability to extend beyond that if we've made acceptable progress with the projects and that, that be included in there. I think that's a pretty simple mutually agreeable set of language that we could, we could work out. 12 months will go fast. When you're talking about this type of project environment, I would assume both projects would have involvement from the MEDC, multiple boards and commissions of the city, meeting schedules. 12 months is aggressive for either project. I know it seems like a long time to lock up these, these properties, but any development of this size or scale is going to take at least, at least that long to get the initial planning commission approvals.
If I may, to the chair. I, I would be personally more comfortable with a 12 month with that option to extend. So at least we're coming back and having that conversation. I acknowledge the, the difficulty of it, but in our side, in all fairness, we have to put in enough time for public input, make sure we're doing the right things in due diligence on our side, and cultivating that good partnership. But, you know, we don't want to be prohibitively difficult about this, we want to be good partners. It's just the, I would much rather have that kind of hard stop at 12 months with the option to at least have the discussion at that point if we need to go, so we know why, we know that there aren't other inherent, and it goes back to the milestone discussion, right? We want to know if there's a problem, not at month 18.
And we have no problem with that, staff, that's fine.
Other comments, questions?
The other point I didn't get to, I just wanted to throw out there as well is, and we kind of alluded to this, but during this timeframe, doing the exclusivity agreement is part of our due diligence, I think it's important to emphasize that there is a transition planning activity as well. So before we break ground, and this is our partnership with the. So, before we break ground, and this is our partnership with, I think, the DDA and other entities are important, to say that, yeah, we have a plan for businesses, that during this disruption of construction, we know how we're going to keep, you know, Ferndale accessible, we know how we're going to, you know, keep folks in business and work with them hand-in-hand. So, it's very clear and deliberate, and we're very open and communicative about the fact that, yes, there's a plan. As much as we're doing before, we've got something in place to make sure that our current businesses are supported through this process. So, and I think that's another outcome or metric that we've got in place, that before this period is done, we've got an acceptable plan in place to help execute that.
Dan, just to follow up on that, I kind of see that as a continuation of the public participation plan. It may not come out right away in the upfront part of this conversation until we understand what the footprint of the building will be like. But I really think it's important. I agree.
Yeah, no, I think the public participation is critical and feeds into that. I mean, it's things like, and I, yeah, and I think things like where do we put the cars while construction is going on?
Yeah, exactly.
Right?
It's going to be huge. The communication with our business owners is going to be huge, and the other audience is going to be the residents most immediately impacted, the ones that live on Whittington, the ones that live on Troy. How big, you know, and where do they get to be, have input in the process is going to be critical, those two groups in particular.
And I just wanted to say, you know, the DDA had on their PowerPoint tonight, the city and the DDA teamwork, and so I expect that's how it's going to be on this project.
A fabulous opportunity to exercise.
Well, and, I mean, speaking of that, oh, Mike, did you want to... Mike has the chair of the DDA board.
Just a quick comment. The DDA is excited about both plans in here, but we don't really see a picture or a layout or a design yet. And I heard the number of 150, 100 to 150 employees for a business, and 100 residential units. Do they have numbers for the property? How many parking spaces and surplus spaces?
Dan, I mean, Derek, am I going to let you field that one?
We, yeah, we've certainly talked, and I think considering the City Center project, Mr. Wolfson has had some more time in front of council in the past, dealing with specifics and conceptual designs. We've certainly talked about concepts with the other project. Both of them provide a considerable amount of parking. I think the City Center one was four stories and approximately 100 residential units. The other project is a considerable amount more parking just because of the size and scale of it, and it deals with the Troy lot as well. We don't have as many details. We are not ready at this point to talk about specific numbers for any projects. We are nowhere near that point with either of them. Depending on which direction council goes, those are the first things we're going to start to go through and meet with residents and business owners about is specifically what we think can be supported and specifically what that design will look like. But we're not ready to talk about that tonight.
So, speaking of the DDA, I mean, it was so clear, and that wasn't timed this way, but in their presentation tonight, when they talk about the goals that the DDA has, you know, they talked about encouraging mixed use, especially as it relates to office. And office is important, in my perspective, to this project because it brings... The best thing we could do to help our retailers during the day is bring more foot traffic during the day. So, these are people with high incomes that are going to be here during the day, not when our parking is at its most maxed out. So, these are folks that conceivably would go home at night, or maybe walk to a club, but won't need an additional parking space. So, office is a critical component of this to me, and what makes the 360 development we're pursuing. But you talk about increased parking, and you talk about increased density and more residential. What's interesting and exciting about the 360 project is, it's exciting to have developers, frankly, wanting to do any of those components. I'm glad that we finally reached that day. But to have all of those pieces in one project is almost overwhelming and incredibly exciting. I think it probably makes it a more complex and maybe difficult project to put together. It probably does require more time than a smaller project. I am grateful that Bob is here because Bob's development right across the street has been a catalyst for the development that's happened on the east side of Nine Mile. And frankly, I think if it wasn't for the fact that all of these components had come together in one project, we'd probably be, in my, for me, I'd sit here and vote to move ahead with that project. But the office component, I think, is what separates them for me. I don't know enough, I'm not a realtor or in the high-tech business, so I don't know with certainty that there's enough tenants to do it. But I think that the opportunity is so exciting to sort of transform the downtown, and especially transform what happens during the day downtown, that it's worth us exploring that. So, that would, that my inclination, my, I'm going to vote tonight for the 360 Ferndale project. But I want to say that I'm really grateful that we have two, frankly, outstanding projects from developers that know their business better than I do, and would, either one would be a great addition to our town. We have to do this right. This is just the first step of a lot of steps to go. But that's where I'm at. I do have a couple of specific questions then about the exclusive negotiating rights agreement that would, that's been drafted with 360. And Dan, Chris, maybe this, or maybe this, I don't know if this is a Dan question or a Derek question, but there's a couple of places in here where it references a good-faith deposit. Is there a deposit that's required with this agreement? And if not, if so, what is it? And if not, why is that in here? I noticed on page five, the very first line, it's there. I think I saw it one other place as well. But we're not, to my understanding, we weren't talking about a deposit?
No, I think that's an earlier draft. Which page are you looking at?
Really? I'm looking at page five, the very first line.
What section is that?
We're talking about remedies. So, section 4.6B, remedies.
Yeah, that is, there's no 4.6.
That is an earlier draft that you're looking at.
Do I have an old draft?
You must have an old one.
Wow, well, I would love that one. All right. And so, I will also tell you what drew me to that section, and this, I think, is a Dan question. Oh, there's, these are like totally different now, so... Wow, I really do have an old agreement. So, that's a problem. The good-faith negotiations, my question initially was, I'm sure there's a legal definition for what constitutes good-faith negotiations, and I would like you to tell me a little bit about what that is. But I will say, my, assuming that in this draft is similar to this draft, the remedy was simply that the developer's sole remedy is to terminate this agreement. So, the city, even if we didn't operate in good faith, and I know that we will, the remedy wouldn't be any sort of financial penalty to the city. But talk to me a little bit about what it means to negotiate in good faith from a legal perspective.
Well, I mean, that is a term of art. Typically, that would mean, you know, a reasonable person negotiating to try and achieve a certain outcome. And the outcome is set forth in the recital is, if possible, to come to a agreement with respect to, for the one, for the proposal by 360, to come together with an agreement on a mixed-use office and public parking plan. So, the fallback is what a reasonable person would construe as good faith. There's no framework with respect to exactly what that means. But you're right, Your Honor, that with respect to the default provision, it would allow for 360, if it determines or believes that the city's not exercising in good faith, that it could walk from the agreement. And similarly, it would provide a remedy for the city if it thought 360 wasn't acting in good faith, or as a reasonable negotiating partner should, that the city could elect to try and terminate the agreement.
But good faith is not not meeting benchmarks.
No, because there's no benchmarks that are set forth in the agreement.
Because there are no benchmarks set forth. So, six months comes, and, I mean, and I assume this is, you know, we're going to be working closely with either developer, so, but...
Well, to the extent that there are specific benchmarks that you have in mind, it would be preferable for those to be in the document, because those aren't subjective, they are objective. And so, if there's something that you have in mind with particularity, that would be something that could be put in to the document.
Hey, well, so it gets back to this notion of these benchmarks. I'm not sure they need to be in here or not, but I hear you say that you're as anxious to have some measures along the way as we are, and that everybody seems to agree that we ought to be able to know at 3, 6, 9 months how we're doing. What is our remedy if we get to six months and we're not meeting our benchmarks? I guess, now I won't ask that from a legal perspective, but I'll ask that to the developers. You guys have done these projects before. I mean...
I can tell you...
Yeah, please.
What we've advocated and has been successful in the past is, if it's, you know, a 12, 15, 18-month agreement, is every three months, a developer comes back in the public quorum and reports where they are. And that's really the best, a very good faith, you know, expression. You're going to get public comment, you know, to say, "This is the progress we've made." It'll be apparent to you if it's moving forward, I believe.
Thank you.
The alternative would be to say site plan approval by X date, you know, which has more particular, you know, that's more specific. But that may not be reasonable to have those dates at this point in time.
I'm not sure that it is, that's the trouble.
I was going to say, just a point, I do think to get a PUD approval, which is short of a site plan, is going to take a year, probably, to go through that whole process. I do think that with either project, I would conservatively say a year. I would be very comfortable, or I think that the larger project may take a little longer than that to get the actual PUD approval, which subsequently, formal site plans come in after that. I know the City Center project proposed six months. We may be able to get a PUD done in six months. If we had the PUD agreement in front of us right now, just the public hearing process takes 90 days. If we were starting to notice that right now for planning commission approval, so that would give you an idea of the timeframe. If I had the agreement in front of me, it would probably be, with the city attorney's recommendation, it'd be 90 days before it was in front of you. And we're nowhere near that point with either project right now. So, a PUD approval at the end of a year, I think, is an aggressive timeframe. I don't know how many specific benchmarks related to development you guys would want to see, other than updates every, maybe every 90 days. I think that's a fantastic suggestion for either project. And then maybe at that point, there can be a discussion and some ability to opt out if everybody's not happy. Just to add my two cents on that.
So, I, yes, and I trust, Derek, that you hear council's desire for the benchmarks.
Certainly.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add a few things before you vote. I think there's been great comments tonight by the public and by the council, and I appreciate, you know, the thought that's gone into this, because I think these are, this is helpful for the community, as well as to evaluate the projects. We've been involved with a number of public partner redevelopments between the communities. And I just, I think the, a couple of points that were made, I just want to reiterate and expand upon. One of them was from Councilwoman Piana about the, you know, the sort of the studies and stuff like that, which I think is a very good idea and something that should be really looked at very carefully, because we've been involved with one development in particular in the city of Canton, where we developed Cherhill Village. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that, but they wanted to create a new downtown in the city of Canton. And we built apartments and a performing arts center that was attached to apartments. Some pictures are in your package. But it was the idea to create, you know, a new downtown there, and there was a lot of commentary by the public, people in the public, as well as the people involved in there, about wanting certain mixed-use uses that weren't feasible, some of which we were able to, and being in the business, we understood what we could do, some of which was not feasible, some of which we ended up just agreeing to do the development. And I think it's very prudent upon your part to analyze the feasibility of these things, because you don't want to end up with vacant space or a development that doesn't work after, you know, 12 months or 18 months. And I think you'd be able to consider that very quickly, once you understand the proposed, the structure of the deal as well. So, I think that would be very good, because we don't want to see another failed project, whoever ends up doing that. And so, that was one thing, I appreciated you saying that, and I think that would be a good thing to be added in any of that. The other reason why we thought six months, where we proposed, is we felt within six months we could, we either would have an idea if this is moving forward or not, in terms of the scope. We fully understand that a PUD, and I agree with Derek's comment, would take a year, and I'm not trying to negotiate against myself. But realistically, that, you know, to get into the ground is going to take some time. However, working with all the different agencies that are involved, you know, whatever types of conditions are set forth on the project, you should be able to iron out most of that stuff in six months. And I think, you know, you want to consider that, you know, the environment you're in in terms of the interest rates, and where you're going, and it's, you know, I agree with the other party by saying that, you know, I think everybody's motivated to get this going right away. So, that's why I proposed that. And just lastly, I do want to comment on one thing that I heard, because I was involved with redevelopment in Miami, in an area called Midtown Miami, which is right near the Design District, and I have some photos in that. And usually what happens, in my experience, you know, with some of these sort of incubator jobs and stuff like that, and is, you know, that they come and they fill up space that's existing right away. And they may not be able to accommodate, you know, the large goals in the future, and I think that thinking forward in terms of the trend is good, because these developments take, you know, one, two, three years. But what we see on the ground is a lot of vacancies. And, you know, you could take 50 or 100 people and fill them in to retail vacant spaces or office spaces and stuff in the area, and say, "Look, we're here now, and we want to expand." I don't see where those uses are and where those employees are. So, I just wanted to comment on that, because when I was redeveloping in Miami, you know, you saw warehouses in our districts and designers and stuff, they were already there in place. So, anyways, thank you, I just wanted to say that.
If I may, I would like to follow up. I do appreciate you acknowledging the importance of an analysis of entitlements, but I also want to know that I proposed it to council when Mr. Wolfson came to us in 2010. So, I wanted to do analysis on his development project, too. When you've got public property online and public incentives, you need to make sure, again, you're getting a balanced and reasonable deal. And so, it's important for me, it's one of my interests of this project, that we do that.
All right. Other questions or comments? And I'm just going to conclude mine by saying that I also support the 12-month with a provision to extend if necessary.
Well, I'm going to, hey, if there's no more questions, I'm going to take a shot at doing a...
Can I make one more statement before we go? Just going back to our discussion about benchmarks, there is a clause here, section 2.2, that talks about upon request, we can ask for the financials or what have you. I don't think we have to go crazy around benchmarks necessarily, you know what I mean? So, that, again, it's not about nitpicking anything or whatever. But I think there are, and I'm not an expert of it, it should be in this agreement or outside of it, but I think that is, that would be an example of a reasonable benchmark, to make sure the financial feasibility is there, you know what I mean, to make that kind of request.
Oh, yeah, we certainly believe in the agreement, this agreement, the development agreement will require them to provide any information either planning commissioner or city council wants at any time to demonstrate that the project continues to provide...
But I'm just saying, suggesting from a benchmark perspective, we come up with a system to, for both sides, to monitor and look at it, to say, "Yeah, that's the kind of thing that's there," you know what I mean? Are there leases signed, that kind of stuff? I mean, there's different things that I don't think that, from a broad sense, that we could, we can build into an agreement that talks about what those thresholds are, or what those benchmarks are.
Understood.
So, we have points of conversation when you come back every three months to give us updates. I mean, you know, so they're clear what we're looking for.
So, a motion doesn't preclude further discussion, by the way?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to finish up.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely.
I just want to thank both developers for coming forward, and I also want to thank Derek and his department for doing all the work to date and bringing this to us. I, I think both, both plans, ooh, both plans are very good, but to me, young people are interested in new spaces and new technology, and that's going to drive the young people, the young entrepreneurs to Ferndale. If young techies wanted to move to Ferndale, the Ferndale Center building would be filled with them. The thing is, is they don't want 20-year-old wiring in a building, they want new tech, and they want to live and work in the same, near or close to the same space. So, that's one of my reasons for supporting the 360 program. But whichever plan works, I hope that the development group that didn't receive support tonight will consider, you know, looking at another space in Ferndale, because those two plots are not the only ones that could support redevelopment. two plots are not the only ones that could support redevelopment.
Councilman Lennon.
As has been asked and stated, I just don't speak up quick enough. So, just move on.
All right.
All right. I'm going to try to do a motion here, but please, we need to do friendly amendments. But I'm not going to put the benchmarks in the motion, right? That's agreed upon? Okay. I move that city council authorizers, the mayor, city attorney and staff to finalize and execute the exclusive negotiating rights agreement with 360 Ferndale LLC for a period of 12 months with the option to extend based off of mutually agreed parameters. Would that be?
May I offer an alternative?
Yes.
Instead of mutually agreed parameters, which I don't have a problem with the language, but I think just a more functionality base would be to extend for a period not to exceed 12 months unless otherwise approved by council.
So, basically, you're, basically by putting that 12-month deadline in there, you actually have to come back and say, we're extending or we're not?
Correct.
Okay, I get it. I'm good with that.
All right, that is a motion. Is there a support for that motion? Support. All right, further discussion, that doesn't end the discussion. Any questions that anyone in the audience has thought of while you were sitting there listening?
I just think this is the right direction for our downtown. I think it is about placemaking, it's about attracting entrepreneurs, it's about increasing the number of families in our downtown and giving different choices for people to live. It's exactly what we've been trying to do for the last 10 years, and we finally have projects to help us fulfill that vision.
I'd also like to reiterate, I'd again, I'm incredibly grateful for both parties and their offer to come in. And I think that, I mean, I think what tips the, tips me towards 360 is that I think that the office component of it is just too compelling not to explore. And that's why I think we should go down that road, but it's not for lack of genuine thanks and interest in other parties, and hopefully there's, you know, more business we can do together in the future.
Are we ready to vote? Sheriff Lynn, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes, thank you, that item's adopted.
I just would like to, first of all, say thank you. And then, I would like to also extend my thanks to Bob and Sam from Besse, especially. And I would also like to say, the office component is the reason staff made, we understand the difficulty with it, we understand how that impacts the project and it makes it more complex. We'd like to hope that, stay interested either in other parcels in the city and/or if this goes backwards and the office component ceases to be a part of it or isn't workable, we hope that we consider coming back and take a look at that project again. Bob has done a lot of good, or Mr. Wolfson's done a lot of nice things in the city. The project across the street is exactly what he said it would be when he proposed it years ago. And if this project significantly changes, we hope that we consider coming back and talking to us again either about one of these parcels or another one in the city. So, thank you.
All right, next item of business is call to council. Police Chief Collins, anything for the good of the city this evening?
Nothing this evening.
All right. Jenny, anything from HR this evening? No. Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department this evening? Well, I got nothing this, all right. Joe, anything from the chief innovation officer this evening? Wow. Lloyd, anything from DPW this evening? Keep, hang on to your show, Sullivan. Joe, anything else from the recreation department this evening? What? Nothing else? All right, my, you're all shy tonight. Um, Sheriff Lynn, anything from the city clerk side?
Sorry, nothing.
Wow. April, anything from the city manager's office?
Sure, let's burst the bubble just a little bit.
All right.
Very briefly, I wanted to give council an update on where we are with Hazel Park as it relates to the fire authority. As we come up on budget hearings and budget workshops over the course of the next few weeks, I just wanted to let everybody know that the fire authority, a conversation with Hazel Park has somewhat stalled at this point. They have significant concerns that they have within their own community and their millages and where they are currently with their finances, and they need more time to figure out how all of that works together. The door isn't closed by any means, but unfortunately, we have to, as the city of Ferndale, have to continue to move forward with what would it look like without an authority. So, at this time, I think our conversations have stalled. I don't believe the doors are closed, but Chief Sullivan and I are going to have to work toward how will this fire department look if we do not have a fire authority. So, I know that Hazel Park will continue to work through what their needs are, and so will the city of Ferndale, as well as we'll be looking at other opportunities to partner with other communities and with Hazel Park as time moves on. So, again, the door isn't closed, but at this point, Kevin and I feel that as we bring forward thoughts and ideas as it relates to how we're going to fund our fire department and what our fire department will look like in the budget, we're going to proceed without the authority part of that, but know that we're still in conversation and still to neighbors with Hazel Park as they try to figure out what it is that their millage requirements are as well. So, we just felt that at this point, we need to start moving forward and figuring out our plan of action so that we aren't standing there holding a budget that we can't support. So, I just wanted to let council know where we are and that we'll continue to move forward the best way possible.
So, when you talk about bringing us forward options, is that through the budget process since this obviously has an impact on the budget?
Sure, yeah, I mean, it will start with the budget process. Kevin and I, sorry, Chief Sullivan and I may not be complete by the time the budget process, since that starts next week.
Yes, it does.
But we will be continually providing alternatives, and we're working through that right now, as well as meeting with our fire union to try to see what some options are. I think we have some great ideas that we've already been kind of working through, knowing that this might not necessarily work out. So, I would imagine at the budget workshops, we'll be having multiple conversations on fire service and moving forward, as well as, as you know, our head lease is almost expiring, is actually in the next couple of years, so we'll have to provide alternatives for that as well. And this budget process is going to lay the groundwork for where we're moving forward and helping, a good basis for those conversations. So, I think it's going to be a bigger conversation, but we have an immediate need for this next fiscal year that we'll be working through.
Anything else?
No, that's enough.
Dan, Chris, anything from the legal perspective?
Just one item, Your Honor. Kind of related, but the council is aware of the city's, the provision of the Michigan Constitution regarding the city not lending its credit. There has been a joint resolution passed by the Senate and House asking that the question of an amendment to the Michigan Constitution be provided to, to add an additional section to Article VII, which would allow the cities to give away its property where there's a determination of no use or public purpose. It's something that's going to be followed, it's probably going to come to the electors of the state in November. Nothing further.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Mayor Protem Martin.
I do. The Ferndale Community Foundation grant season is upon us, and grant applications are available on our website, www.ferndale.ferndalecommunityfoundation.org. We are awarding grants up to $2,500. And so, if the application's online, as is my phone number, if there's any questions or concerns, we have extended the date to April 18th for submission. That's it.
Excellent. Councilman Lennon.
Nada.
Nada. Councilman Pollock.
Well, Ms. Butters took care of the FEF dinner. Mary Sustabauer talked about CFF, Good Neighbors Awards. Mr. Martin talked about the FCF grant. So, all I have is make sure you have your street, if you have a sewer in front of your home, make sure it's cleaned off so that the street doesn't back up because a lot of debris is now getting caught up in those drains. And again, I reiterate, put things on pallets or in plastic bins in your basements because the ground has not thawed.
Thank you. Councilwoman Piana.
Yes, I have a couple. I want to announce the Chamber of Commerce Rainbow Run. Registration is open now for the run, which is a 5K on Saturday, May 31st. If you want to have your neighbors throw colored powdered paint at you while you run and with your citizens of Ferndale, it's a great opportunity. I did it last year, and I walked-run because I hate running, but I did it anyway because it was a good thing, a good fundraiser. So, the Chamber of Commerce is raising money for local nonprofits, and there are many other runs going on in other communities of similar type themes. So, make sure you register at rainbow-run.com. An early bird registration is March 30th, and you'll save five bucks if you register by then. I wanted to announce the Dale's Neighborhood Group is having its first happy hour at the Emery this Wednesday at 7:00. So, come meet your neighbors if you haven't met them before, and it's very kid-friendly, so bring the kids. And then, I have a suggestion for staff. I got a couple of questions from homeowners about how to prepare for their board of review meeting, and they asked me for advice, and I had to do a quick Google search to find how to prepare evidence and put your case together. And I thought it would be helpful as a customer services, have something on our website about how to prepare for your board of review. I haven't checked out the Oakland County website because it's down right now, and it's been down for a couple hours, so I'm not sure.
That power outage, it's back up.
Yeah, I'm not sure if they have, if they provide that type of amenity, but I think that would be very helpful for our residents who have chose to go to the board of review. And then, my final note, which I forgot to say during the development proposal, is that the mayor is always saying he wants to make Ferndale a great place to start a business, and I think we're all on board with that. But from my urban planning background, I've always wanted to make Ferndale a great place to do development and be a great partner. That is a different type of positioning, you know, and looking at your processes and your strategies internally and your customer service. And so, developers certainly know if it's difficult to do development in a city, they take the risk whether to go down that path or not, and I'm very pleased that we have developers choosing Ferndale because I like to believe it is easy to do development in Ferndale, as well as start a business.
That's right. I do think that these, that this development shows the confidence that people have in our community as a place to be successful. I hope it also reflects that they think it is a friendly place to do business, and I hope it's a very successful place to do business. I only have one announcement tonight, and that is that the Chamber of Commerce every year sponsors the mayor's State of the City address, and they have announced that this year's State of the City address will be Tuesday, March 25th, at the Rust Belt Market. So, that should be a fun venue to do the State of the City address at. The speech is at 7:00, and there's no charge. If you want to come to the chamber's reception before that, there's a $15 reception that starts at 5:30.
5:30.
Where you can talk to our department heads and meet folks and staff and just, and meet with the chamber, but there's no charge to come to the speech, which is at 7:00. And now, I just have to start writing it. So, with that, I'll adjourn the meeting so I can go home. Good night.